Oh goodness.
So, not sleeping good, but wait to hear, wait to hear from the surgeon so they can schedule it, so.
First time on TV?
You probably should have combed your hair.
Doing good.
Oh well. Dave, you're retired. Nobody cares. You're retired. Nobody cares.
Lots of people care.
Do they?
Really?
I don't know about lots, but a couple. I care. Let's try to keep it that way. I was like, what? I think I got you now. Not.
And they couldn't, and they couldn't get it stopped. And finally, they put out a list of all the clean chambers.
Oh, good.
Shouldn't there be some kind of evidence that you're one of those others? Because as far as I know, there's only evidence of two. That would be an alien.
No, the answer is no. Okay, it's nine o'clock. Are we ready? Okay, it is nine o'clock. It's time on our schedule for our weekly business meeting. Before we stand and have Janine Shepherd do the prayer, I just want to thank Commissioner Bradshaw for filling in for me while I was remoting in as chairman. So let's all stand. Janine?
Dear Lord, we thank you for this time to pause and give you thanks. You're a good father and you give good gifts. We want, you want us to come to you and seek your face and you long to spend time with us. Lord, I ask for your blessing over these men of God. I ask them that you give them your wisdom, grace, peace, and insight into what you want to do in Bonner County. We appreciate these men, Lord, but we know that our only hope is in you. Bring your kingdom to earth in our nation, but let revival begin here, right now, with these people and this city. We are asking that you spark revival in the hearts of people and that they will turn to you. We know that it is your will that all come to know you. In this time of national division, Lord, we ask that you unite our county and bring peace. Disclose corruption in all arenas and bring it to light so that our land can be healed and people will turn to you. We have seen your faithful hand upon our coun- country in the past, and we ask that you continue to protect us with your mighty hand. You are so faithful. I pray for these men and their families, that they would be free of disease, infection, and inflammation, and that you would heal anything that is not in alignment with your perfect will. Protect these men and their families. Help us to point people to you, Lord, in everything we do. Help our light to shine in the darkness and help us to show your glory. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thanks, Janine.
Follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Jeff?
Yeah.
Bomb alert.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt the order of agenda as presented.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Public comment. Do we have any public comment? Maureen?
She's gonna have to get up there.
Yeah, you're gonna have to go use the mic. Sorry, Maureen. Because we are broadcasting probably over 30 million people to this.
Yeah, at least three.
Or three.
Good morning, Maureen. Good morning, Commissioners. We live in the Hootu Valley and many of us raise cows, sheep, pigs, llamas, and...
Sorry, go ahead.
Anyway, preserving a rich history of agriculture in the Hootu Valley, there's an application for a rezone of 160 acres to be changed from agriculture to rural, from 10-acre plots to five-acre plots. And this would be a disastrous precedent, and I'm asking you, we had a petition, we had very little time, but we have over 100 signatures of people in that area against this, and I'm asking you to, to accept that as a moral responsibility to your constituents, also to uphold the objectives of the comprehensive plan. And some of them are reversing the decline of the family farm as of permanent significance to retaining productive agricultural lands. The size of the agricultural sector makes protecting the valuable resources that allow it to function, all the more important. Bonner County seeks to promote the retention of agricultural lands by implementing planning strategies that facilitate agricultural productivity and agri-business activities. So I'm just asking you to not allow this to pass. And preserving agricultural zoned land should be a top priority for planning and zoning according to these objectives. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Maureen. Anyone else? Doug, nothing? Kind of shocked. Yeah, I think I saw an email, and I apologize, I hadn't read it yet, but I saw the email this morning, so. Thank you. Okay, seen none. Let's move on to consent agenda.
All right, Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
And I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any question or comment? Doug?
Yeah, Snap-on diagnostic, diagnostic computer 5500, Western Systems for brushes for the sweepers, 6712, Marine Division for the Sheriff's Office, computers, mobile computers, 11,525. Yes, they're ultra-heavy duty, yeah. Paid for by license fees. That's usually the part you like, Doug.
Well, no, it's generated as part of boat licensing, so it would always stay in that category. It wouldn't go to our general.
Who's talking about, maybe for a dog or something, but. This is part of doing business, I guess.
No.
And I would think no, because it's, it'd have to be agendized.
Yeah, it's not agendized, and I don't see anywhere in the minutes.
I mean, it would have had to have been agendized before and talked about, and that's what would get it in the minutes.
Oh, thanks, Doug. Okay, sorry. Okay. So, any other public comment before we move on? Bill, you look like you're ready to say something. Really, I'm shocked. Normally, we can't check you up, so, yeah, anyway, so, seen none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Okay, moving along to Clerk Mike Rosedale.
Morning, Commissioners, morning, everybody.
Morning.
Before you, I have Claims Batch Number Nine for your approval in the amount of 876,965.15, and Demand Batch Number Nine in the amount of 418,409.22, totaling 1,295,374.57 for your approval.
Chairman, I move to approve payment of FY '21 Claims and Demands in Batch Number Nine totaling 1,295,374.57.
Second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any question or comment? Seen none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next before you, I have EMS Claims Batch Number Nine in the amount of 37,971.8, and Demand Batch Number Nine in the amount of $25,000, totaling 62,971.8 for your approval.
All right, I move to approve payment of the FY '21 EMS Claims and Demands in Batch Number Nine totaling 62,971.8.
And I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any question or comment? Doug?
Yep, it was a life pack. Life pack, $35,000 for a life pack, which is...
Something we picked up in budgeting.
What they hook you up to.
Yeah, it does it all.
The monitoring stuff. I think so, it was like, yeah.
I think it was one, yeah.
Unfortunately.
Yeah, saving your life, not cheating.
Last Friday.
Doug, you're out of practice. Okay.
We'll figure it out.
Any other question or comment? Seen none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thanks, Mike. Let's go Justice Services, Ron.
Sheesh, she should have his own meeting.
Well, when I come, I come with quantity.
Yes, you do.
Good morning, by the way. Good morning, everyone else. Ron Stoltz, Director, Justice Services, for the record. So this morning, I have six items. The first item is regarding, well, actually, the first three are regarding destruction of some records. Bonner County Juvenile Detention Center currently holds resident records for juveniles with birthdates ranging from January 1 of 1998 to December 31 of 2000, which have been reviewed by myself and deemed temporary records needing to be retained not less than two years after the inmate's 18th birthday or two years after release from custody. These records include copies of court documents, booking sheets, proms to appear forms, copies of police reports, medical screenings, medical requests, doctor's orders of medication orders. Idaho Code Section 31-871(c) authorizes the destruction of temporary records after a retention period of not less than two years.
Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve Resolution 2021-07, ordering the destruction of juvenile resident temporary records as described above, held by the Bonner County Juvenile Detention Center for residents with birthdates ranging from January 1, 1998, to December 31, 2000, pursuant to Idaho Code 31-871(c), as approved by legal.
I would second that.
You fell asleep there.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any question or comment? It's pretty simple. Okay, seen none. All those in favor say aye.
I'll try to jazz this one up a little bit.
Did we get all three ayes?
We did.
Okay, motion passes.
Second item, Bonner County Juvenile Detention Center currently holds facility records for the year 2018, which have been reviewed by myself and deemed temporary records needing to be retained not less than two years. These records include shift summaries, cell locations, facility search reports, transport sheets, transport vehicle logs, guest registries, handwritten logs, cash logs, grievance reports, fire drill reports, maintenance request reports, and fleet request reports. Idaho Code Section 31-871(c) authorizes the destruction of temporary records after a retention period of not less than two years.
Thanks, Ron.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, based upon the information before us, I move to approve Resolution 21-08, ordering the destruction of Bonner County Juvenile Detention Facility temporary records as described above, held by the Bonner County Juvenile Detention Center for the year 2018 pursuant to Idaho Code Section 31-871(c), as approved by legal.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any question or comment? Seen none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Go ahead, Ron.
So this is the last one of the destruction of records. It's a little more exciting. Bonner County Juvenile Detention Center currently holds facility records for the year 1998 to 2009, which have been reviewed by myself and deemed permanent records needing to be retained not less than 10 years. These records, these records are incident reports on inactive files, which are Idaho, fall under Idaho Code Section 31-871, authorizes the destruction of permanent records after a retention period of not less than 10 years.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve Resolution 2021-09, ordering the destruction of Bonner County Juvenile Detention Facility, Facility permanent records and as described above, held by the Bonner County Juvenile Detention Center for the years 1998 to 2009, pursuant to Idaho Code 31-871(c), as approved by legal.
I would second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any question or comment, Doug?
Better, you say?
Very good. Thank you, Doug. They're only permanent for 10 years. After that, they're non-permanent.
Is there some computer backup for this, someplace that's gonna continue to exist?
Yes. So, yeah, they're all, they're all in our database. These are just paper copies, which require storage, but, yeah, we're not purging them from our database. So all those incident reports. Yeah, yeah, they're, they're still there. They're just not gonna be in paper form anymore.
They're still there, they're just not there.
Right.
Okay, any other question or comment? Any other question? That's 20 years in a dog life. No, that's more than 20 years. That's 70 years in a dog's life, so. Any other question or comment? Seen none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thanks.
All right, these really are a little more exciting. So this is all, the next three are unanticipated revenue.
Saying that.
Well, that's, well, this is money. It's a little more exciting. So Bonner County Justice Services receives lottery tax monies from the Idaho Department of Juvenile Corrections each fiscal year. Justice Service Department has received lottery tax, unanticipated revenue in the amount of $23,759 from the Idaho Department of Juvenile Corrections.
Chairman, based upon the information before us, I move to approve Resolution 21-10, ordering the clerk to schedule revenue in the probation services FY 2021 budget, account number 006006619500, capital office equipment by $23,759, from zero to $23,759,000.
And I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any question or comment? Mike?
Well, we had a, we had a placeholder in the budget that we originally wrote, but we, we never know how much to anticipate for that, so versus... This was, we budgeted zero in that line item, so this is all, everything we received is unanticipated. Because we, we never know who's gonna win the lottery or whether anybody's gonna win the lottery. It's a lottery. It's a crapshoot.
Funny, because I don't know that either. Go ahead, Maureen.
You ask me that every year, and I take that back to the folks at the Department of Juvenile Corrections, and nobody has ever given me an answer. I do not know.
There's a secret formula that apparently is so secret that we don't even know.
Apparently so, yeah.
Okay, any other question or comment? Seen none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Keep going around, you're on a roll here.
All right. The next one is cigarette tax money. So Justice Services Department has received cigarette tax, unanticipated revenue in the amount of $105,000 and $105,088. Cigarette tax received from DJC is that amount, 135, or what, from the total cigarette tax received from IDJC is $135,088.
Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve Resolution 2021-11, ordering the clerk to schedule revenue in the probation services FY 21 budget, count number 00600661-7900, cigarette tax carryover by $105,088 from $30,000 to $135,088. This adjustment is due to the receipt of unanticipated tobacco tax revenue received from the state of Idaho.
I would second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any question or comment?
Apparently, we are smoking more now.
Smoke them if you got them.
With COVID, I guess everybody just stayed home and smoked themselves.
Get their breathing exercise.
Well, that reduces taxes to the, on the county budgets. That's awesome.
Probably liquor stores are doing that.
Seen none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Okay, last one.
All right, the finale.
Phew, you're really starting to, yeah, I think you might set a record for the most resolutions in one.
Wow, this is a long one.
I try. I like long resolutions, and I like them all in one shot. Bonner County Justice Services receives monies from Boundary County, Idaho, Lincoln County, Montana, the Kootenai Tribe of Idaho, and the Idaho Department of Juvenile Corrections, and parents of juveniles on probation of Bonner County, Idaho, for housing juveniles in the Bonner County Juvenile Detention Center each fiscal year. The Justice Services Department has received unanticipated revenue from these contracts and parent payments in the amount of $25,000, $25,083. The total money is received from the referenced contracts and parent payments for housing juvenile offenders is $50,083.
All right, Mr. Chairman, based upon the information before us, I move to approve Resolution 21-12, ordering the clerk to schedule revenue in the Juvenile Detention FY 2021 budget, revenue account number 034034754990, juvenile detention billing for use as additional funding for juvenile detention FY 2021 budget, account number 034757430, repairs and maintenance buildings, fixtures, grounds, in the amount of $25,083. This adjustment is due to the receipt of unanticipated revenue received from the parent billings and contracts for housing juvenile offenders in Bonner County Juvenile Detention Center.
Phew, I'll second that.
Long one. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any question or comment? The significance to this revenue that we get, and especially unanticipated revenue, is we actually use it, unlike normal government where we just would increase the budget, we actually use it to offset the money we take from taxpayers, and so we, we're really diligent about it, and it's, and I love seeing this money come in. Go ahead, Dan. Usually by check. No. It's because what we, so the way, the way budgeting works in Idaho is we've got to put a placeholder in for, for revenue that we don't know what the number is, and it fluctuates every year. What we do is we put a placeholder in, and then a lot of times, like with the cigarette tax, it's higher than what we originally thought, and so we have to come in and, and bring it in as unanticipated revenue, because it was technically unanticipated, because we don't know what the number is. And so that's how, that's how we get it. I mean, it all depends on, with this one, you know, how many, how many additional, it was, this was the tribal kids that we end up getting with cigarettes, is how many, how much more people smoke. Go ahead.
Dan, if it's above the placeholder, it's unanticipated, below the unanticipated, what a placeholder.
Right.
So we always shoot low.
Yeah, we're always really conservative about our placeholders, and we have a lot of departments planning. I mean, there's a number of them, even Roden Bridge has some that, that we try to, we try to guess what it's gonna be based on historical, and then we always kind of come in under.
And what's going on, just depending on.
It's easier to add it to it than just to go back and try to find some to fill it.
Well, yeah, because we set our budget based on that number, and then, you know, boom, boom, boom. So anyway, any other question or comments? Seen none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Ron. Marathon, man.
Man.
Kevin, assistance.
Kevin Rothenberg, County Assistance. Ron, would you like to present mine? Mine's not as exciting or...
We can make Ron the official presenter.
So Commissioners, for you, is a resolution for destruction of indigent office records. These are semi-permanent records that have met the five-year retention.
Cool. I like these short ones.
Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I make the motion to approve Resolution 2021-13 for the approval of destruction of indigent assistance office records.
I would second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any question or comment? Seen none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Kevin. Public Defender, do we have somebody zooming in to do this one? I don't see anybody. Did we get rid of the Public Defender's Office? Are they still around?
No, that's just...
Well, Jeff?
That was a dream, man.
Yeah, I know. I'll let you read this one.
You want me to read it?
Please.
Okay. Public Defender's Office is seeking approval to destroy records as outlined in the Public Defender's Record Retention Policy, Resolution 16-22, passed by B O C C on February 16, 2016. Attached, please find our most current list of files and/or documents that are due to be disposed of, shredded. Once the list has been approved for disposal, we will proceed with scheduling a date for shredding.
All right, Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve Resolution 21-14, authorizing the Public Defender's Office to destroy the documents as listed in the attached resolution and as outlined in the Public Defender's Record Retention Policy, Resolution 16-22.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any question or comment? Go ahead, Doug. No, your name's not on there.
They're lawyers.
Attorneys that...
They're all attorneys. No, I'm sure that we're doing it by the book. It's been reviewed by half a dozen attorneys.
Okay. Any other question or comment? Seen none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Moving along to Roden Bridge. Matt?
Matt Mulder, Staff Engineer, for the record. So in 2019, the county was awarded a safety grant through LTAC to pave all of the railroad crossing, or pave the roads at railroad crossing intersections where they're crossing our gravel roads, just 100 feet on either side of the railroads, so that our grader operators didn't have to be grading the roads right up onto and over the railroad tracks, and to make the crossings more visible and provide better traction for people stopping, et cetera. So as part of this process administered by LTAC, we have to do a utility hearing so that the utilities have an opportunity to weigh in on how this project might impact them. And we're not anticipating any impacts at all to any utilities, because we're not digging or relocating any utilities. This is just gonna be paving on top of existing roads, so. But we have to go through the motions, so I have provided you with this layout of how this utility hearing is supposed to happen per ITD, and I don't think that we're gonna have any utilities here, but you can follow this as closely or as loosely as you guys so choose.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, based on the testimony provided, I move to, to require the utility companies to accommodate the project and relocate the utility facilities as required for the Bonner County Railroad Crossing Improvement Project, Key 21990.
I would second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any question or comment? This is safety grant, not safety dance, if you're an 80s music fan. Go ahead, Doug.
You're telling us that they're not gonna have to move to these facilities at all, and this says that they must?
Have a hearing. It's what state law thinks.
It's, yeah, it's, it's a language thing that, it's a CYA.
It's a barrier.
It's paving. It's, we're not digging, we're not, I know.
He understands that. He's like, why?
I know. Yeah, we, listen.
And we're saying the same thing.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
We need to check the box.
We don't set the rule, rules, we just have to play the game, so. Okay, any other que, Dan? You want us to move some utilities?
I, I think there's 18 gravel railroad crossings that this applies to. I, I think that is all of them. There, there's some question will remain on, you know, how the bids come in, and can we actually afford to do all of them once we have those numbers, but that is the objective of the program.
And will you, will you state too why we're doing this, so everyone knows?
He did.
Oh, did you? Well, I must have fallen asleep during that part, sorry. Oh, yeah, it's on your train, yeah. Basically, our steel plug drivers, you know, it's... Okay, any other question or comment? Seen none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Sorry, Matt, it's my first day back. Okay, Sheriff's Office.
We never read the motion, but hey, what the heck.
Roy, are you coming up?
Oh, yeah, Jeff did. I turned the page.
Got ahead of yourself.
Morning again. So for your consideration this morning, the Bonner County Sheriff's Office is seeking a Waterways Improvement Fund grant through the Idaho Department of Parks and Recreation to purchase a towable side scan sonar, which will greatly enhance the public safety and search and rescue capabilities of the sheriff's office. Side scan sonar provides the ability to quickly search underwater areas for objects in a fraction of the time it would take to search with, with divers alone. In addition, side scan sonars, side scan sonar offers the ability to search at depths that are not attained by members of the dive... that are not attained by members of the dive team. The cost of the side scan sonar is estimated approximately seventy-nine thousand, four hundred and seventy-two dollars. The sheriff's office is seeking a grant in the amount of sixty-three thousand, four hundred and seventy-two dollars with accounting with a county matching funds in the amount of sixteen thousand, account number zero three four nine, zero three four seven nine nine zero zero zero. Action by the Board of County Commissioners is required to approve the grant application and signed, and sign the attached letter of commitment.
Thanks, Roar.
All right, Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve IDPR W I F grant application in the amount of sixty-three thousand, four hundred and seventy-two dollars with a county match of sixteen thousand dollars, and authorize the chairman to sign the letter of commitment.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any question or comment? Doug? You can get access to the application. I don't see why you couldn't. You see, see Jesse afterwards. Dan.
Yes. We've been trying, it's a process.
Yeah, we had.
This is the same.
An application on the agenda for last, for the last meeting, we took that off the agenda to make some adjustments on the equipment that we were seeking based on the capabilities of what we thought we were going to seek versus what we're seeking now, that gives, provides better capabilities with a much better platform, with much better ratings, and so, and they're a little more expensive. No, we have not.
We've been talking about this for a little while, but.
Right.
A lot of it's just treated through the grant process, because first we have to approve going after the grant, then we have, you know, it's just.
So this isn't an automatic either, this goes to the state, and there's a committee that looks at all the different grants, and then they rate them, and, you know, I mean, in general, we do pretty well, but, I mean, this goes through our Waterways Committee, which kind of vets all the different ones that are coming out of at least Bonner County, and try to, you know, equalize it as much as possible to try to keep it as fair as possible, and make sure that they have the best chance when they hit down Boise to get funded, so. It's a, it's a, it's a process.
Side scan the sonar.
Yeah.
That's a tough one. Okay, any other question or comment? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you, Roar, and last but not least, airport.
I thought Dave up there. Uh-oh. That's not good.
Is that Morse code, or? Doug, you must know how to do Morse code.
Hey, Dave, we're gonna have to mute you, you've got a bunch of background noise, and we'll just read it. Yowzer, okay, sorry, Dave, that, we're not going to be able to utilize that today for whatever reason, must be the snow.
Turn your camera on, maybe you can do sign language.
All right.
Go ahead.
Commissioners, we have the opportunity to purchase a used plow truck from the Independent Highway District. The truck is being sold as surplus and is still in reasonably good condition with years of use left for our airports. This is nineteen ninety-four auto car tandem axle dump truck with a large dump bed and the size and ability to pull an equipment trailer used for moving the mower and loader between airports. It is equipped with two-way angle snow plow in good condition. The truck and plow will cost seven thousand dollars, with approximately three thousand dollars needed to repair non-structural damage to fiberglass hood, replace batteries, belts, et cetera. Our newest current plow truck at the airport is an eighty-four Ford nine thousand, which will become our backup and emergency plow at Sandpoint. Please see attached description of current trucks and the need for newer equipment. This is not a budgeted item, but I propose we use funds from zero zero three, five five zero zero, zero 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 six, nine four seven one, pavement rehabilitation.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to purchase this used plow truck.
I would second that.
That's a nice motion. Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any question or comment?
That's a great motion.
Ron, I, I don't know if you noticed how concise that motion was.
It's one sentence.